Anderson?
Yes.
Feltes?
Yes.
Sensala?
Yeah.
Mason?
Yes.
Colstead?
Yes.
Conrad?
Present.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Verification of post.
The agenda was posted at City Hall, State Bank of Arcadia, Arcadia TV and Appliance and the city website on May 31st by 4:30 PM.
All right, doing anything I'd like to move up is on item eight, G, and especially events, just to move that up to the top. Be mindful, Barbara, I'm getting her underway. If there's no other questions, entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Feltes, second by Mazak. Clerk call the roll.
Anderson?
Yes.
Feltes?
Yeah.
Sensala?
Yeah.
Mason?
Yes.
Colstead?
Yes.
Conrad?
Yes.
Motion carries public comment, public comment, public comment. None, presentations, none this evening, old business, media minutes from May 15th, 2019.
So moved.
Motion by Feltes is our second.
Second.
By Colstead. Comments, questions? Clerk call the roll.
Feltes?
No.
Sensala?
Yeah.
Mason?
Yes.
Colstead?
Yes.
Conrad?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Lord and commission updates, we have none this evening, department updates, none this evening. This time I open the public hearing to the 2019, 2020 liquor license hearing. So any members from the public command will just keep it open until we get to that later on, on 10 E. You have a note that it opened at 5:02, Angela or Amy? All right, eight G, special events, discussion of possible action on waiver fee for nonprofit organizations applying for a special event permit. Something that Angela and I had discussed as well as Bill, I think we loosely discussed it, counsel.
Yeah, when the National Guard wanted to do their event.
When the National Guard, definitely. About any time that anybody applies for a special event, that if it's a nonprofit that we waive the fee. Thoughts in regards to that?
No problem.
How do you determine if it's a nonprofit? Can anyone just come in and call themselves a nonprofit organization?
Typically, I would say if they are either a government agency or listed as a
401C.
Three. Would be mine. If they're not, they would have to make a pitch to the, of why they should have that fee waived. Because I don't believe the Lions Club is a 401C three. I don't believe so.
501.
501, sorry.
What are these fiscal, five?
501C three.
But at that point, unless we want to handle each one independently, that's fine with me too. And we can waive them on a case-by-case basis.
I, I think that would be a good idea because
Just to keep its status quo and if they want to waive the fee, they come to the council and ask them for the fee to be waived because of their nonprofit status or the Lions Club status and what they do for the community.
Because there may be some that don't have the 501C that are still
A nonprofit.
Nonprofit.
Right, but I would say too that there needs to be something written up about their responsibilities though after the event. As far as cleaning out.
Right. Well, and that would be covered under their, their permit. That's all within the permit of what they're responsible for, cleanup, parking, bathrooms. Even that goes beyond just the special event, that also is in a, in a special event or is not the shelter agreement that it needs to be cleared out. We'll just leave it status quo then?
Sure.
Sounds good? Item number two, their discussion of possible action on special events permit application with the Tremble County Arts For All Family Music Night and fee for the Joyce, use of Joyce Wanik Pavilion. Barbara, if you want to kind of give a brief on it, that would be just fine.
Sure, yes.
Introduce yourself.
Yes, and I will hand out these flyers for anyone that wants to see, they're not finalized, but just to get a visual of what is this all about. So my name is Barb, I'm currently working with the Chamber, but I'm also a co-founder of Tremble County Arts For All. And we actually registered as a nonprofit with the Arcadia, I'm sorry, Arts Initiative, there we go, it's new. So right now, the event is still under Tremble County Arts For All. So I also work at the schools as a sub-teacher, and I help with the farmers market, so Tremble County Arts For All is one of those things that I helped start to kind of bring the community closer together and offer some, some more cultural and arts activities. And so initially, this family music night, we wanted to do it closer to downtown Washington Court, but because we wanted to be family-friendly, we were kind of concerned about the security being read on the, on the court right there by the intersection. So we chose the pavilion to hopefully use for that. So what it would be is two nights, so in June and August, musicians would come in, we would have some kids' activities, chalk painting, face painting, things like that, and yeah, we'd like to use that for it, or the pavilion more or less.
The Joyce Wanik Pavilion.
Oh, exactly.
Which is a shame, Barker.
My backyard.
And so yeah, there'd be music, six to nine would be the event. Does it mean that the music is the whole time, but just kind of that's what we're estimating? Then also food trucks, that was one thing that we were thinking about to draw more people. And I understand that there's some permits for that.
But you're working with the city staff as well as the police department as far as parking and all that kind of stuff, it's better to store it away.
Yeah, and we're, it's hard for us to say right now how many people we're expecting, is that what you're wondering? We're thinking 50, but maybe that's low or high. We organized the Taste of Arcadia up at the high school, and so we had way more people than we thought. And we would have it probably at 300, but I don't think, maybe 50 to 100 for this event. If the weather is nice.
I think that's a great, I mean, it's a great thing, it's, you and I spoken before of getting the community and a group together a couple times in the summer, we could get great ones. And they should be utilized.
What kind of music is it, if I just, from my own?
Sure, it's kind of like a country rock, so the individuals in June, they're from Ettrick, and the other person is from Rochester, just because we couldn't, all the local bands are taken. So we're kind of behind on schedule, so from Rochester, but kind of just low-key country rock alternative music.
Okay.
Yeah. And we're also looking to, I'm working with some high schoolers to try to get them to participate, maybe some of the accidentals and maybe some other groups, maybe the Catholic school. And then also, we have a couple Latino musicians in mind, and we just have, we didn't put them on the poster just because it wasn't, it wasn't finalized, so.
Sure.
We're trying to kind of create a good mix.
Angela, you have comments or questions in regards to food trucks?
Well, we're working on a food truck ordinance, so you know, as we get closer to, as the month goes on and we juggle everything else, when you get done with the grants, that's something that we need to tackle and bring to the council for approval on the food trucks.
Mm-hmm. So would that, basically that wouldn't be possible for that June event, is that what you're saying? That'd have to be
It's up to the council, I mean, currently we don't regulate food trucks, nor do we allow them on public property.
Public property. Obviously if they're listed on private property, I mean, one of the biggest concerns of we've, we don't want them just pulling up at, say, Washington Square or something like that, using public property to promote business, but if it's put into something like this, I guess I have a little different feelings, but I think that's a good thing and it's a great
Right, they serve there, it's through them.
Right, maybe it's, would be no different than Ashley for the Arts or Briler Days or something like that. And, and even outside, other than that, like this is a different event, you know, like you've heard me talk about it before of like a food truck Friday or something at the Deer Park to help people get, get people outside and help promote maybe other businesses that want to move into the city of Arcadia the least expensive way is a food truck, before they would buy or lease a property, so. I mean, if that's okay with you guys, you know, to waive, waive that for this event is definitely a possibility.
If we want that in the minutes, we'd have to put that on the 19th because it's not on today's agenda and we can certainly do that.
Okay. Any other questions?
So do you need a motion to?
We would need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Feltes, second, by Colstead, and the event in June is what day?
10/9.
10/9, so then we'll put it, we'll put it on there that we have, that we'll approve that food trucks can be utilized even if the, even if the ordinance hasn't been changed.
Okay.
That, you know, we'll accept it as part of this agreement in June 19th.
Okay, and one thing I forgot, it says we have to have insurance, is that still a requirement then?
Correct.
Okay, and that would, okay, and the other thing is that the fee that you waived is just for this application, but the $300 for the pavilion?
Uh, we don't waive, no.
You don't, okay.
I mean, we could.
With a nonprofit, you know, we have let the boys go, it's in the library, use it.
It's their first year.
And it is during the week, so.
It's up to you guys then.
Let's give it to them, first year.
The funding we are
Kind of get it off the ground.
Right.
That is kind of, yeah, that'd be great because the funding we are using is the money from the Taste of Arcadia, which people donated to, which was great, you know, so we had $292 that people donated. But then 292 at the $300 fee.
You're eight bucks short already, so.
Right.
Starting out in a hole.
Is that okay with you, Marla, is to waive that as part of Joe's motion?
Yes. Can I add one, so you're waiving the fees for use of Joyce Wanik for both dates, are you also waiving the special event permit fee in the same motion?
Yes.
So you want to do it on a case-by-case basis? I'm, I'm just asking.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And so do you would like to waive the?
No.
Okay, to help them out this year?
Get them going.
And then next year they should have your nonprofit, which is easier?
Yeah, we do have that status.
Okay.
It is not Tremble County Arts For All, it's a different one, but it's just not on the poster yet, but we do have the status.
Marla, is that okay with you? Any other comments or questions? Well, I think it's a, I think it's a great event, I think it's something nice to have our parks utilized.
Good luck, have fun. What does it cost to get your name on the poster right there, sponsor logo?
You know, any amount.
Be a monster.
Give you the number.
Well, eight bucks doing it?
We'll have a donation jar, you can
Yeah, but that's not going to get my name on the poster.
No, I don't think so.
If there's no other questions, clerk will call the roll.
Sensala?
Yes.
Mason?
Yes.
Colstead, yes. Conrad?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Feltes?
Yes.
Motion carries. Maybe the paper would even be nice enough to give you some good publicity here, story in regards to this.
Yeah, yeah.
We're not very nice.
Thank you very much.
We just have to do a story on it.
Item G three, discussion of possible action on the Ashley for the Arts Special Events Agreement. Is this something that you guys read it over?
It wasn't in the back end, no.
It was not?
No.
Okay. So we want to move this back to the next meeting then?
We certainly can. It was not. Pretty evil on Friday, so.
Well, I'll give you the background, I don't know if any, most of the background, this is something that we worked on probably close to eight months, I suppose, going between Ashley for the Arts, their attorneys, our attorneys, and going back to making sure we're covered for the events we wanted to be covered for and the language they wanted to have on there, so I think we should postpone it just till the next meeting. So nobody had the time to, to read it. Motion, postponed by Joe and Sensala at the second. Clerk will call the roll.
Mason?
Yes.
Colstead, yes. Conrad?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Feltes?
Absolutely.
Sensala?
Yeah.
It is, it is some very interesting reading. Say it facetiously, there is a lot of legal jargon in this thing. But if there are any questions, you can bring them to me. Nora Angela, and we will probably have to bounce something off Terry, he did a lot of work with it, so. But feel free to ask. Item 8A, discussion of possible action on provisional building permit, the Holy Family Catholic Church.
So they have submitted state approved, they have state-approved plans, and this is for the addition of the Catholic school? There's a map attached?
They would have to have state-approved plans.
What's that?
They would have to have state-approved plans.
And you said they were, have been approved?
They have state-approved plans already. So this is going to come to the south, maybe a little southwest, closer to McKinley Street. Okay, one time their initial plan was maybe to go over Maple Street and ask us to not utilize that street anymore, however they changed. This is the plan they came up with, so. I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Sensala, is there a second?
Second.
I heard him say it first, sorry, Joe. Second by Anderson?
He took his parking spot, no, he's
Comments?
Took it, taking it, motion.
Comments, questions? Here now, clerk will call the roll.
Colstead, yes. Conrad?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yeah.
Feltes?
Yeah.
Sensala?
Yeah.
Mason?
Yes.
Motion carries, item 8B, discussion of possible action on amendment number one to owner-engineer agreement for well number seven, D V Engineering.
So moved.
Motion by Feltes, is there a second?
Number seven.
By Colstead. I think everything was in the summary, if there's comments, questions? Clerk will call the roll.
Conrad?
I just don't expect those two people to be making the motion in the second for D V Engineering, you got me a little confused. My name, Marla, and Joe.
Well, he is a little expensive.
But.
I'll say this, they're all, they ain't, none of them are afraid to bill.
Conrad?
I said yes.
I'm sorry, didn't hear that.
Oh, okay.
Anderson?
Yes.
Feltes?
Yeah.
Sensala?
Yeah.
Mason?
Yes.
Colstead, yes.
Sorry, I didn't know you didn't hear.
Sorry.
Item 8C, discussion of possible action on First Amendment, technical services by and between the city of Arcadia and Strand Associates Incorporated, this is for the E D A grant for the internal train.
So moved.
Motion by
Second.
Feltes, second by Mazak. So I think we just had a lump sum initially.
Correct.
And then they needed to have it broken down by how it was going to be split out. Requirement by the E D A. So now that they granted the, they're awarded the, the grant, we had to split it out, so that's all this is. Comments, questions? Clerk will call the roll.
Anderson?
Yes.
Feltes?
Yeah.
Sensala?
Yeah.
Mason?
Yes.
Colstead?
Yes.
Conrad?
Yes.
Item 8D, discussion of possible action on Gavney Road GeoTech Propolis, this is something discussed at the last meeting.
So moved, second.
Motion by Feltes, second by Mazak, this is just to do some soil borings on there, to see what, if we need to do a whole reconstruction or we can use all the dirt that's there. Tear it up, go ahead.
This is in partnership with the township?
This will be split 50/50.
How, is there a possible way we can make that a city street?
No.
Why is that?
I think it would create an island. No. I don't know the answer off the top of my head.
We've got, worked in relationship with the town to go half, and we're going to build it a rural section road. Oh, that sounds nice, but what does that mean? They're going to pay half, they're going to pay half and Yeah, no rural section road. There'd be no curve and gutter on the north side.
Be similar, similar to what it is, except it'll be four feet wider.
Yeah, it's going to be four feet wider and no curve and gutter on the north side. Because they don't want it, or? They don't want it. If we want it on the south side, we have to pay for it.
And currently there's no curve and gutter.
Right. I'm just, I'm just concerned, you're concerned moving forward that
we might not be agreement, in agreeable as we are currently with future councils or future townships, town, town boards for maintenance and those type of things.
Yeah, I mean, who's going to plow it, who's going to, who's going to, what it needs to be chip sealed, who's going to pay for that?
I think any maintenance, maintenance would be 50/50.
When, when they feel it should be done, or when we feel it should be done?
Well, I would have to come to an agreement. Who plows it? Currently the town does. But that, they brought it up to have us plow it, but we haven't, we haven't discussed it. By being, by meaning we haven't discussed it, there's other stuff that needs to go.
Who from the stables been negotiating with them?
Just myself and Bill. And when Joe was on the, the group that talked about the 50/50 to have it redone.
And Gary Bush.
And Gary Bush from the utilities to see if we needed any utilities to be gone through there. They have one member of their board and two community members. I mean, this is simply to just get the soil borings done? And the road needs to be fixed.
And it's not going to be done. Well, I, I don't disagree.
Right, you would just like to see us own the road.
Or them own it. Because what benefit is it to us?
Well, I think it's huge benefits to front of our park, and I would, I would rather have, if we're going to go down that road, I'd rather have us own it because we could control the maintenance than if it really goes downhill in years to come.
You know, look at it from the other point of view, what benefit is it to them to have it? What do they gain by having half a road debt?
What do you mean half a road?
Well, it's a 50/50 road.
It's a border road, so.
That's all I have.
Any other questions? Clerk will call the roll.
Feltes?
Yes.
Sensala?
Yeah.
Mason?
Yes.
Colstead, yes. Conrad?
Upstate.
Anderson?
Yes.
I will find out, we're going to have to answer about Yeah. So, because they don't, they don't like to lose, because then they lose road usage as well and road costs and expense, so, but. Item 8E, discussion of possible action on adoption of post issuance debt compliance policies, procedures, resolution 2019-10. Angela, you could probably better answer these over, just give us a brief summary.
There are certain obligations placed on, on the city and the city clerks, when we issue debt, we have to do annual reporting. Allers and Associates recommends that we have a written policy in place for post issuance debt compliance and procedures in adopting a resolution, so that's one of those things we just want to get adopted and get in place so that we have it. When we issue debt, the questions that we're asked is, do we have a policy in place?
Comments or questions? Now, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Feltes is our second.
Second.
And Mazak. Clerk will call the roll.
Sensala?
Yeah.
Mason?
Yes.
Colstead?
Yes.
Conrad?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Feltes?
Yes.
carries. Item 8F, discussion of possible action on 2018 chip sealing bids, I'm sure Angela has that printed out.
We got it, we're gonna, sorry.
In your back end, you can see there, was the roads, streets need to be chip sealed. Raleigh goes through every year and grades which roads need to be done. And we try to get to them all, obviously there's just circumstances that something gets moved around because of one decide they need it more than another, so be it, but. One for each eye. So the bid opening was this morning, yesterday morning?
It was this morning.
Do you want to go through these, Angela?
We received, the bidder originally was supposed to be at 10, we had it at 10:15, there were three bidders. Farner Asphalt's got construction and Tremble County Highway Department. Every year when we bid this, we bid us, you know, certain roads that Raleigh would like to get done, knowing that the budget is $30,000 and that $30,000 covers chip sealing and crack filling for the year, so he kind of figures out what the crack filling is going to be, we get the bid on the rest, and then he kind of chooses the streets that will fit in so that we kind of stay on their budget or stay at budget. So the top part is the overall bids per vendor, and then on the bottom is kind of where Raleigh felt we needed to be with the crack filling. What we're spending on crack filling.
Right around 6,500 in crack filling. So to err on the side of caution, I went to 7,000 and to best use, not that we're just trying to use the money, but that's the way it comes to the best number, you know, so.
So your recommendation and the lowest bid would be to go with the highway department on the six listed streets for $22,840.
Correct.
So moved.
Questions? Motion by Feltes. Is there a second?
Do you have any just one next year?
Right.
Right, so when he tears it out, is there a second, first?
Sure, yes.
By Mazak, go ahead.
I just learned, so how many do you take off, three, six, more of them?
So what Raleigh typically does is grade all the roads in the city and says, okay, these whatever, 10, 14 maybe are the worst roads, and that's where we're going to put the bid at.
Right, there's always, you know, your, your last, your last four or five, like, you're not going to go and do Green Bay Avenue because it's junk, you know?
Right.
And that's throwing good money after bad, so, you know, these are kind of the ones that
So then the ones that are removed from this year really can almost get moved to the top of the list
Correct.
for next year because they might be graded a little worse or they may hold up better.
Right, but you know, you look at like St. Joe's, well, if we Right, but you know, you look at like St. Joe's, well, if we had twenty, twenty-three thousand to spend, you know, so that one will be on the list, probably priority number one for next year. I mean, if...
Right, and if the bids come in lower.
Except that, you know, that's going to take, what, sixty, sixty-five percent of what we have left.
Right. But that's how he comes up with that number, and then our last, most streets, and then he said move them up.
With that being said, and I don't know how we would come up with more money for seal coating, but that is the key preserving the investment we have in these streets.
Well, when it, I mean, budget time is going to be starting, so it's, I mean, if that we feel as though that's a that's a core thing, and if we want to up it, you know, whatever, even five or ten thousand dollars can get us a couple more streets, so be it.
Seven to ten years longevity more.
Each time. Each time you do it, and I don't know what, what it is per mile, but it's a hundred and forty thousand dollars a mile just for the asphalt today. And I'm, I'm thinking this is around, around probably less than fifty thousand dollars a mile.
Paul?
This is the first time I've seen one of these, so when you did this last year, what, did we have a similar problem, that we had a lot more roads that we thought we needed to do and couldn't do, or is this the first year that we?
Well, I always try to throw, you know, which one should we do? And, and as you can see, you know, we ended up with way more than what we actually have money for.
Yeah.
But that way I can get, you know, there's sixty-five hundred dollars that we did of actual crack filling, we take sixty-five hundred on the twenty-two eight you're at.
Yeah, you're at your thirty thousand, essentially.
So I'm just trying to use up the thirty thousand.
Like last year when you did this, did you come short four roads also that you felt we'd have been better off if we could have?
Right, right.
Okay, so in the long run, are we falling further behind by not coating them, or are we okay? You know, these other four roads, in the long run, are we going to end up paying more because we didn't take care of them now?
You know, like I just said, St. Joe's, you know, if you've got twenty-two thousand left next year, but, but that's, that's a big one too.
To answer your question, technically, yeah, I guess we are falling behind, however, knowing, when we go about this, we know we're going to already be short, but if the bids come in better, we want to, you know, get that, that, those amount of streets. So we, we're, we know we're going to be over what that thirty thousand is going into a crack rally.
Yeah.
However, like I say, the last couple roads maybe don't need, need it nearly as bad, so we could pull those off to meet the bid and save us thirty thousand, but yeah, technically, by not sealing or seal coating a road, you are reducing the longevity of the road.
You know, and like crack filling this year was what he estimates, it's not an exact number, he said sixty-three hundred. Sixty-three to sixty-five. I said, well, I'm going to err on the side of caution and go to seven. A couple years ago, we did like over nine thousand dollars worth, so I think we're catching up a little bit on that, although that's something that you're chasing steady. Because next year, you're going to go on the roads that we did do today and look, and there's going to be some more cracks that you say, well, we really should fill them, you know, the big ones. And then that's, crack filling is kind of a, I mean, Fritz knows that from working on the county. You know, it's little bitty ones, you see some towns that do every single bitty one, well, if you're doing the seal coat over the top, but you start talking something that's busted apart three quarters of an inch, even if you seal coat it, the next year you're going to, it's going to bleed, you know, that, it's going to bleed right through, so...
So next year?
You know, I told him, don't do every single little bitty one, because it's a waste of time, you know?
So when they seal coat it, they have a rough timeframe? Or you will have a rough timeframe of when they would do it?
They will do, more than likely, this will be done in July. Most of them, like the county likes to be done, I think, by the end of July or first part of August with that.
The crack or chip sealing starts the fifth of July. And we start on one end of the county and just, you know, make the circuit.
Wait, now, obviously, so we don't, I mean, remember the one year the county did it, and we had somewhat gravel left over, it was...
Right, they have issued, that was explained.
I'm just, just so that doesn't happen, or again, before a weekend where we have a...
Right. You have to cut back in, but...
Sixty thousand people showing up as well.
Yeah, it'd be a lot of broken windshield.
There was a lot of, a lot of rock that year.
Right.
You know, like, one thing, Paul, just your question was, like, is Nelson nets from like McDonald's over to where you go into the ready mix plant? Well, there's actually a pipe that we should put in, because we got a water spot in front of the Wamby Bank. So I kind of bumped that one off the list, that'll give us some more time to possibly do that work ourselves. Otherwise, I don't know if we'd have time to get it done, we might have to hire that out, well, if we can do it ourselves compared to hiring it, you know? So that's kind of why I bumped those Nelson and Wanit off. St. Joe's got bumped because it was such a huge amount of what was left, that nothing else is, I mean, if you notice, you know, a lot of this is right down here, I like to do sections at a time, do not, you know, if that's the way it works out. All that stuff was done at the same time, so...
We're not moving equipment all over and...
Well, yeah, plus, you know, get a section of town, like, that was all done at the same time, all them little streets and, and river. So now you're going to get it all done, you know, it all basically needs about the same treatment.
Sure.
You do it, and you should be good for, who knows, seven years.
Hopefully longer than that.
Well...
Any other questions?
Yes, where's Farner Asphalt and Scott Construction?
Uh, we don't, like, yeah.
Farner, out of, uh, Roberts, isn't it, Wisconsin?
Yeah.
I think they're out of, right, out of Claire, aren't they, aren't they right behind like Old Claire Truck and Trailer up back in there?
Could be.
But Farmers is, they're, what do they say they're part of?
MAF.
MAF.
MAF. But they're not MAF, but they're...
But they are.
It's a big business.
Right.
Any other comments, questions? Clerk will call the roll.
Sinzala?
Yeah.
Mason?
Yes.
Colstead, yes. Conrad?
Epstein.
Anderson?
Yes.
Feltes?
Yeah.
Motion carries. Item eight H, discussion of possible action to refer the official school map, adoption of the plan.
So moved.
Refer to them, no, no, go over it. Send it back to the council. Motion by Feltes, is there a second?
Second.
By Mason. Questions? Clerk will call the roll.
Mason?
Yes.
Colstead?
Yes.
Conrad?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Feltes?
Yeah.
Sinzala?
Yeah.
Motion carries. E I, discussion of possible action on fireworks seller permit applications for both Express Mart and, and Brothers, which is in Randy's parking lot. Motion by Feltes, is there a second?
Sure, yes.
Mason. These are the two that, only two we had last year as well, I believe.
Did we have any problems last year, people selling without getting it? We did, didn't we?
We did for, um, Express Mart, I believe. Or was it Randy's? I thought it was, I thought it was one, one or the other, I think it was Express Mart though. Angela, do you?
Yeah, I think it was, and then they, they got a permit, and I know, um, Shaco also sold them, but apparently, um, the ti, the type that they were selling were not in our, not under our ordinance.
Whatever, however they classified, whether it's by class or type, it was less than what we require for us.
Yeah, there's class C, five, A, class four.
What does a permit cost?
Seventy-five dollars. Any other questions? Clerk will call the roll.
Colstead, yes. Conrad?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Feltes?
Yeah.
Sinzala?
Yeah.
Mason?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item nine A, approval of bill, general account amount of three hundred and thirty-one thousand five hundred and fifty-nine dollars and eighty-eight cents.
So moved.
Motion by Feltes, is there a second?
Second.
Right, Anderson. Questions?
Yeah, we need to budget, in our budget, if we're going to keep replacing filters at forty-eight thousand dollars a year.
Budgeted every year?
Yeah.
I would agree with that.
Maybe as a line item, just as a capital thing for the pool.
How often do they get replaced?
I don't know. But that's a chunk of change.
I would agree, you know, if, if we've ever changed, I mean, what the expense was or how long ago it's been?
No, I mean, I don't know that.
Because there's filters that we have to change, that it can change more often than other filters, but we, we can ask, I'm going to come out next time and put that as, uh, filters, because I, I agree with Joe on that. Beyond our time, maybe twenty years.
We still have filtration system.
I don't plan to be in twenty years, so, but at least you're set up that there's a, something there that's going into that amount of account every year.
Our insurance company didn't pay for the, uh, little fender bendery mayor hat?
Our insurance company, I talked to them last week, I forget. They paid for it, everything's paid for. We've got a check back.
Yeah, the, the cost was like fifteen, fifteen, um, we have a thousand dollar deductible, so they paid the difference between the deductible and, and that. Um, they are subrogating against the other company who, you know, claimed, first of all, the first phone call was what accident? And then there was some question about them taking ownership for what happened, so our insurance company is on it.
So I got to try to explain that.
Mental English, I'm all hard to handle.
What, what street we were on, what road we were on, how many lanes there were, where the road construction was, where exactly it was in position to the cross street. So...
Nope, these records last night.
I'm not going next time. Just so you know. Sure as heck, not going to try it. At a bad, bad cold pilot, but whatever.
What did they do for a hundred and thirty-one oh four, opened the page up and that was it?
Was that a facetious, facetious question?
Yeah.
Any other questions?
No.
Oh, I have a question, uh, but Wig, Wigmowalik and Franklin? Why were they?
You're, you're going to see another bill in the next couple months for that, we...
That'll explain it.
No, well, no, our, um, so KK Cosner, Cosner, Brokow does municipal court, they had to recuse themselves on a few cases.
Okay.
Because of conflict of interest, so we had to hire that out, so you're going to see some expenses come through for different firms.
Okay.
Anything else? Clerk will call the roll.
Conrad?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Feltes?
Yeah.
Sinzala?
Yeah.
Mason?
Yes.
Colstead?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item ten A, operator licenses, we have one listed. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
By Mason, is there a second?
Second.
By Feltes, I need background checks.
I need background checks, yeah, of course, always.
Quick, quick, questions? Clerk will call the roll.
Anderson?
Yes.
Feltes?
Yeah.
Sinzala? Mason?
Yes.
Colstead?
Yes.
And Conrad?
Yes.
Motion carries. This time I'd like to close the public hearing for the two thousand nineteen twenty liquor license hearing, and entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Feltes, second by Colstead. Comments, questions? Clerk will call the roll.
Feltes?
Yeah.
Sinzala?
Yeah.
Mason?
Yes.
Colstead?
Yes.
Conrad?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yeah.
Motion carries. Item ten C, discussion of possible action on the two thousand nineteen twenty cigarette life application.
So moved. Second.
By Feltes, second by Colstead. Questions?
Sinzala?
Yeah.
Mason?
Yes.
Colstead?
Yes.
Conrad?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Feltes?
Yeah.
Motion carries. Item eleven, April two thousand nineteen safety report, which is listed. There's questions? Any questions now, or if not, reach out to myself or Angela. Future meetings, uh, Wednesday, June nineteenth, same time right here, five o'clock, discussion on about the July third meeting. Now, that's a busy week, we'll take time off. We want to see how things roll in, and have it the tenth, and then have the tenth and the seventeenth, and have them back-to-back weeks.
That works.
Or if we don't have much by the tenth, just do one meeting in July. I know a lot of people are off the fourth, they take off those couple days before, a couple days after, and, uh...
I know she's getting married on the third, to think there.
No comment? So that, that's what we'll do, we'll just tentatively, we'll tentatively schedule it for the tenth, and then Angela and I'll see if there's stuff that needs to be on, put it on, and instead of that, we'll just
Yeah, I guess, we'll maybe just have it from the seventeenth and be done.
Right. We'll see how it goes. Um, obviously, applications for the city administrator are coming in. That'll be coming up in late June, early July, so be aware. I'm not the mouse, so entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by
Second.
By Mason, second by Feltes. Clerk will call the roll.
Mason?
Yes.
Colstead?
Yes.
Conrad?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Feltes?
Yes.
Sinzala?
Absolutely.
Stand adjourned.
Right.